Right now, since Todd is not here tonight, I'll stand in for the moment. And I guess at this moment, instead of us having an invocation or anything, let's have a moment of silence for... I guess all of you know Todd's lost one of his twin grandbabies Friday afternoon, I think it was. So we could just have a moment of silence. All right, thank you again. I know he's going through some very difficult times to family as a whole. So please, again, keep them in your thoughts and prayers. All right, item number two, consideration of annual indexing of elected official salaries. Newberry County Ordinance Number 10117 provides that absent a successful vote to the contrary by Newberry County Council at its first meeting in May, the county-funded salary portions of all countywide elected officials shall be increased at a rate to... at an equal... a rate equal to the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, CPI dash U, as determined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, unadjusted for the most recently reported 12-month period. All right, what are the council's discussion on that?
I asked the last time about what the CPI was as reported in December of 2020. Y'all didn't have that at that time.
The only thing that's been reported is for Social Security, they gave a 1.23% increase, but nothing else has been publicized outside of that. So the regular employees was getting 1.5, and we can vote that or this. It's very close anyway. I think we need to give them what the regular employees are getting.
Y'all heard Mary? You okay here?
The way this reads, if you don't vote for the council to give them what the raise were given, you have to give them the CPI. And they're very close anyway, so I would suggest, just given what the employees are getting anyway, which is 1.5.
Okay, other comments?
Since this is... this is an ordinance, let me make sure I understand if we take no action, what the result will be, since this has already been an approved ordinance in 2017. So if we take no action, it's gonna be increased at the rate of the CPI. And since this is an ordinance, to deviate from that and give it, say, at 1.5% will be a violation of a county ordinance.
No, it says absence a successful vote to the contrary. If we don't vote, then it goes to the CPI.
Jay, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hip, when this was passed, the intent was if council takes no action by May, then it's the CPI. So if council chooses to take action prior to that, it's entirely within the bounds that the ordinance sets forth. It's not a violation of the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, are we good with the comment, the thought, or what do you wish us?
Do we hip? Do we have anybody zooming in from council? Because it was my understanding that our meeting tonight was not the Budget Committee, the Finance Committee. Our meeting tonight was supposed to be full council. And we're only got...
Four, five, four to seven. We do have a quorum, though.
We do have a quorum, but it is full council, so... And we don't have anybody zoomed in. Do you know why the other council members are not here?
I have not heard a thing from anybody.
You know, if you take a vote right now, one vote against it will not be a majority.
We really don't have to do anything tonight. I mean, technically, because we got to the first meeting in May, which will be...
The next meeting.
Huh?
Well, it'll be the... May the 6th.
May 5th is the first? Is that correct? We also have another work session on April 26th. So we can just have the discussion if y'all want, and then we can... see what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's why I'm just... since we don't have but four people here.
I had this down as a work session.
This was a work session for all council.
It's a work session for everybody, not a committee meeting.
That's right. So if you want input from the others, and since, like you said, it's May, you may want to delay this.
And we also may have a doubt we'll have input on that for us, the CPI, at that point, will we?
May the 6th is when they told us we'd have CPI up in the state level. But you can put it on the agenda for the work session on the 26th.
Let's do that, if that's okay with everybody else.
That makes sense to me, okay.
All right, so we will move that to the next meeting appearances. We have Molly Fortune, Newberry Opera House Executive Director.
Do you mind if I hand you all something?
Sure.
Thanks for your time today. I know you've got a lot going on today, especially with this work session, and a lot of your time is taken up in that. And I want to also thank our board member, Jack Shields, who's come today to also support the strong relationship that the county has with the Opera House. This graphic, and for those that are zooming, I apologize for not sending it to Taylor, but it shows that the county is one of our greatest advocates for the arts in the county. And one way they do that is through our program called Newberry Arts For All. And this houses the Dufford Institute for Cultural Diversity, which is a program that started roughly about 10 years ago. And through that, we have all the students from Newberry County come to one performance per month for the school year. So sometimes it's eight months, sometimes it's nine months. And those students come free of charge. And we put together a study guide that meets South Carolina standards if the artists don't have them. So the students learn about these performances within their school day, come to the performance, and then their parents are invited back, free of charge. So it's a way for us to get out into the county and show the arts in a different perspective. The second program that this Arts For All works with, through the partnership with the county, is that Astronaut Camp. This was born out of the Eclipse Fest. And we were actually the first to come to Janet and say, "We want a STEAM camp." And I know that sounds awfully crazy for a performing arts venue, but we wanted to meet our students where they were. And the county school system said STEAM is an area. So we have two camps this year, Astronaut Camp and Astronaut Academy. Each one will have 15 fully funded slots for our county students. And so I gave you a price there. So average is about $200. And if you price that by 15, that's $3,000 for one camp. And what's fantastic about this is the school system has also provided transportation to the county to grab these students in the morning and then return them home in the afternoon. I remember that obviously the camp last year got canceled due to COVID, but the camp before, the school bus driver got to know these students so well that she came to graduation, and the kids really appreciated that. They also were served a hot lunch every day, catered by Sodexo out of the college. So everyone is fed. And then we vote... we don't vote, I should take that back. The students vote for three students to go to a fully funded NASA camp up in Huntsville. So that is also what goes into that money. And then the final is that community concert. And that's important because it shows that arts supply and support folks that you may not think of. And that was born into Park Jams. And with that first concert we had, we had 150 guests. And the Park Jams kind of were born out of that. And people started coming, and so we had 15 Park Jams last year, last summer. And that was every Friday, and we had to extend it because people wanted to come more. And then this year, we have 19, and these artists are all from Newberry County. And it encompasses the culture of Newberry County, including our Latin, African-American, the gospel, the rock, the country, whatever you can think of. And then also, these funds are used to do other things, like Arts in the Lobby with Newberry Made, which is a way to use our space for people that don't necessarily want to come to see a live performance. I have several friends who can't stand to see live performance, but they love to come to the Opera House and see what we've got in our lobby. And that expands that reach as well. And then we do a lot of community outreach with organizations, the Ballet Guild. I know that we've had some kids from Whitmire come in. But here's an example of Hope Illuminates where we use that for. And we also give y'all great credit in social media presence on our website and in our brochures about what the arts do. I do want to say that when we write grants to underwrite a lot of our programs, they ask if your county's involved. And that is hugely important to us. We want our county to be behind what we're doing to try to drive economic development. That is part of our mission. So let me just give you a couple statistics, because any time anybody says arts, especially me growing up, it was like, "Oh, the whiny organizations." But let me tell you something. There are 3,142 counties in the 50 states. Over half of these counties have a historic theater, and that's very important, as we are one of them. They don't only provide arts and entertainment, but they're an economic generator. Historic theaters collectively generate $427 million annually for their local and state governments, and they support over 131,000 full-time jobs. Those numbers do not include the Broadway Houses. That's a completely separate situation. Overall, the annual attendance at historic theaters is 70.7 million attendees. And annual household expenditures are $4.3 billion. Annual contribution to the household incomes across the United States, $2.9 billion. The arts are actually bigger than the airlines industry. In the last package, the airlines got a lot of love, $62 billion in fact. And the arts got $75 million. But did you know the domestic airlines has $138 billion in annual revenues? And that's internationally. And they employ 319,000 internationally. The arts and entertainment in the United States alone is a $152 billion annual revenues. They employ over 1.6 million employees in the United States alone. $64 billion are for nonprofit organizations, and that comes from the Americans for the Arts. And $4.3 billion with the historic theaters contributing to that. The audience impact, $31.47 on average above the ticket price. That's what folks are bringing when they come to the Opera House, when they come down here, from anywhere in our county and anywhere in the state. Based on a 1929, wow, 2019 study, 212 audience surveys conducted by the Americans for the Arts, a typical person will travel only within their county to spend that $31. In a town with a population of less than 50,000, and from what I gather when I looked, we're around 39,000 folks in our county, 38,440, we could help and create 39 full-time jobs. We will help and create 1.4 million in expenditures, that I think is rather important to this budget meeting. And we can generate over $125,000 for local and state governments. Now, Newberry Arts For All, with all the free things, they're not free, but they are what we do in our mission. Arts is not just hand me, hand me, hand me. It is a direct contributor to the economic impact of Newberry. And if I remember correctly, when Samsung made their decision, one of the reasons why was because of the culture that this county offers. And we want to continue to do that. One important note with the Astronaut Academy, you may not think that that's an economic driver, but it is, because there are several experts in the field that are coming from Fort Gordon, which is a satellite for the CIA's coding experts. And they're coming over to teach these kids how to code in Newberry County, which means that they'll have a passion for this place. And hopefully, they'll go away, and they'll start a job, and they'll bring it right back here because they want to support their community. So we have a direct impact in that. I just wanted to take a minute to thank y'all for that money. It is important. I know it's not a lot, but it is important to us so we can continue to really look beyond our tower and see where we can impact the county and help the county. So I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, we've got one, two, three, four people that potentially would like to speak. Well, actually, I guess a few more, but four people on here that's of four groups. Do we want to hear them before the budget or after the budget?
I like before myself, to give them an opportunity to talk to us before we... But on the other hand, if we go ahead and go through this and we bring up something in our discussion that they would like to speak to, then I don't want to prevent them from speaking after the fact either, if that makes any sense. So if we have somebody who wants to speak first, let them speak first. Otherwise, they can, or anybody can speak afterwards.
All right, Newberry County Ordinance, who do y'all want to speak before or after?
Y'all aren't doing any official votes tonight, are you?
Not.
We'll go ahead.
Okay. Jack Shields, he's already gone. Is that Gordon? And then Ben Chapman after? All right, we're going with the meeting then. General Operating Budget, Finance Staff, number four.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to go over basically everything that we discussed at the Finance Committee, but in more detail. So if we come across one portion that you would like to stop at and elaborate on, please say so, so that we don't keep going and have to go back to it, okay? And I'll give Travis Tom to get his things ready. Ready?
Yeah.
As a summary, County Council's budgeting authority applies to three separate levies, each having its own budget and vice versa. The vast majority of the county's activities are funded in the general operating budget. The payment of amortizations related to debt for larger capital expenditures is funded by debt service budget. And a community services budget contains appropriations for the library, Piedmont Technical College, and Newberry Agency for Disabilities and Special Needs. For any given levy, the millage rate is determined by dividing the value of one tax mill, 1/1,000 of the assessed value of all taxable property in the county into the budgetary needs of the levy, after all other revenue sources are considered. The result of this equation is the number of mills you will need. By way of example, for fiscal year 2122, the number of mills needed for the budget as it is presented to you is the same millage as fiscal year 2021, 119.4 mills. So in order to determine your taxation rate for any property, you would take the assessed value of that property divided by 1,000... Excuse me. You take the assessed value, and if it is a residential property, for example, a $150,000 home is assessed at 4%. So the tax assessment is 6,000. You would multiply that rate times .1194, and that would give you $716 for your tax bill for general operating only. That is the same rate that we are in the current budget for, as proposed now. If you'll turn to your tabs in your book, the first one is labeled general operating. Our budget is currently balanced at $27,589,571. This is an increase of $928,005 over FY 2021 levels. The next chart indicates the variances from 45 revenue sources from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2122. Just looking at the chart on the next page, you will see the different amounts as they are variance from one year to the other. And if you'll go over to the next page, in this fiscal... this upcoming fiscal year, the landfill tipping fees are going to be increased by $1 per ton. Currently, it's $48. It is to go to $49 per ton. In Table 2 below, you'll see the revenue sources. These are the top 20 revenue sources of our budget. These sources provide 96.6% of all revenue in the proposed budget. These that are... those that are characterized as property tax-related, and they are highlighted in yellow, total $19,787,692. And this represents 71.7% of all revenue. This index shows that the county relies very highly upon property tax taxation. Also note, the line highlighted in green, balance brought forward, which will also be referred to as fund balance or cash on hand. It is decreasing slightly from the previous year for the use of its purposes in FY 2122. Moving along to page four. The performance trends in major revenue sources. Their top 11 revenue sources are listed in this table. Reliance on these resources has been relatively consistent over the five years that are examined. Likewise, the sources themselves have been consistent revenue producers. These 11 sources are 89.76% of all revenue proposed for fiscal year 2122. And if you have any questions about those, we'll do our best to explain those. There's the same sources that are on the previous table. These just give you a history, a five-year history of these top 11. Okay, as we move on, the counties... Given the county's dependence on property taxation as a revenue source, it's prudent to regularly examine the list of companies that pay large tax amounts of those taxes and to know what the impact of who the tax rolls might be if any one of these companies closed its facilities here. Table 2B indicates under the 1920, the top... those top 10 taxpayers. And the lower part is the 2021 of those taxpayers. There's a little bit of change, because some may move in or move out. As you'll note, in 2021, SWRM moved into the table. And right offhand, I couldn't remember who moved out.
Graphic packaging, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. That name didn't ring a bell with me there for a minute. So those may change over the years usually. Or historically, Oscar Mayer has been near the top of that. And then the others have kind of flipped flopped back and forth. But you can see if any one of those came out for general operating, the column to the right, the council levy, is the one that would make a big difference for our tax revenue. The anticipated impact for the operating budget for the tax levy for 2122. Setting the mill values in the levies necessary to service approved budgets is the province of the county auditor. However, it is natural for council to be curious about the impact of its spending levels on taxation. Accordingly, staff makes its best effort every year during the budgeting process to project a millage rate that, given the best information available, approximate what the levies will look like when the tax bills will be mailed in the fall, after the adoption of the budget. For current budget 2021, the constituents of a mill were estimated as follows. Current real estate taxes were estimated at $14,275,344. Vehicle taxes, $1,947,466. Homestead reimbursement, $1,8061. And manufacturers reimbursement at $136,438, all totaling $17,367,309. At a mill levy of 119.4 mills, the mill value was estimated during the budget process at $145,447. However, during collections, these are the actual values presented to us from the treasurer's office. The total collections are $17,728,279, which brings the collected value of a mill to $148,478. As you note, between the two differences of the constituents of a mill, in 2021, watercraft taxes is showing now where it did not in 1920. That is because... excuse me. That's right. That is because watercraft is now separated from real estate property and is billed to taxpayers on a monthly occurring cycle, just as vehicles are. Actual collections from these five constituent values of the mill outperformed estimates by a total of $360,970. Spread over the 119.4 mill levy, the mill was undervalued by $3,031. In other words, the collection cycle for FY 2021 proved the mill value was $148,478, not the $145,447 estimated during the budgeted process. All other things being equal, a larger mill value requires a less intensive or lower levy. However, the county auditor might identify other dynamics taking place in the tax base, such as net growth or depreciation, that the collection cycle for FY 2122 might be expected to evidence. Likewise, spending needs change from year to year in virtually every local government jurisdiction. It is the combination of maraud factors such as these that will ultimately determine any change in the levy. Staff does not anticipate the need for a millage increase in the levy for FY 2122. Everything is based upon, right now, is if we keep the same millage at 119.4. Do you have any questions regarding the revenues before we move forward to expenditures?
Any questions? Onto the expenditures.
Okay, on to the expenditures.
On to expenditures.
Okay, expenditures. The total of the proposed expenditures for FY 2122 is $27,589,571. Table three indicates from FY 2021 expenditures departments with expenditure changes greater than 10% and greater than $50,000. In table three, those are highlighted in yellow. We listed each department with their variances. I will hit the high spots. The non-departmental that is highlighted in yellow includes contingency funding for such purposes as workers' compensation, employee health insurance, fuel costs, vehicle repairs. Contingency in this context refers to additional funding that might be needed if department-specific budgets prove inadequate for those purposes. Employee salaries adjustment included in that, which includes a 1.5% for employees and a 2.5% for the sheriff's department, for a total of $232,000. That does include all benefits. It also includes the health insurance coverage for the, we've just heard that we're going to have an increase in our health insurance, would have cost about $47,000. Our toward insurance has increased $25,000 and our building insurance increased by $37,000. So that should come up with the, the $342,000 that that department is over. Planning and zoning. The increase in planning and zoning is professional services. Newberry County has contracted with a company to act as a county's engineers to review future plans for new housing subdivisions. Also, Newberry County is now paying the stipend for the joint planning and the BZA board. That has been, turned out to be very good because now they have a quorum for their meetings. So that's about $13,000 increase. It's also highlighted in yellow. The state. The state has approved four additional school resource officers, salaries only. And that, their salaries are 100% reimbursed, but the cost for the vehicles and equipment are expenses of the county. For the FY 2021 fiscal year, two school resource officers have been hired, two vehicles and equipment have been purchased. The FY 2021 vehicles were placed in lease purchase for last year or the current year. The remaining two vehicles and equipment will be purchased through the county ordinary budget on a cash basis. Collections contracted services has increased by $42,000. That is a contract for them to haul our recyclables from the collection centers to the transfer station. Right? Yeah. This addition will fund an additional, also in this account, they will fund an additional dollar for the recycling attendance. All wages. Also placed in this is the Keep America Beautiful Fund of $17,000. This was previously budgeted for the Soil and Water Conservation District, but they have been moved to the collection budgets. Collections will use these funds for litter control projects. For the FY 2021 budget, $40,000 has been budgeted to replace two recycling attendant buildings for Seabird and Silver Street. Facilities management. Contracted maintenance has increased by $83,000. Utilities 15 and capital repairs 30,000. Contracted services also for 5,300. Newberry Opera House. Staff recommends discontinuing the use of its discretionary accommodations tax funding in the amount of $25,000 as an appropriation for the opera house. Until now, the county has provided this funding to the opera house since 2004. This funding may be used to fund general operations of the county, lessening the need for property tax revenue from the citizens. Soil and water conservation. Staff needs additional information to support funding this request. It is staff's understanding that this position will be not part-time. This position is not a county employee. However, more than 20 years ago, the administrator at that time agreed to put this full-time employee on the county payroll so he or she would be eligible for the South Carolina Retirement System and Health Insurance. County policy does not allow part-time employees to participate in the retirement system or health insurance. A minimum of 30 hours per week is required to be eligible to participate in this health insurance plan. And that basically has the changes of the $50,000 or more. Also on our spending priorities in historical context, we have a chart here that gives you from FY 17 to 18 to FY 2021, the percentage increases for those departments based on those categories. We're up for any questions y'all might have.
The other night, for us to give you what was state mandated, there was a handout laid in front of you that shows the dollar amounts of some of those state mandated offices and what portion they are in relationship to the budget.
It also gives you a square footage based on $125 a square foot on what we have for those buildings.
And am I reading that correct? It'd be $7,732,662 of unfunded mandates from the state out of our $27 million budget. And then on the square footage, we're another $4,863.
It's two categories on those. I can't put my finger on mine.
$13,769.31, both of them.
The total is $13,760,931.
So about half of our budget.
Oh, and we only, revenues, we anticipate about $1.2 million.
And I do not see the, I know we said in here we had $60,000 for SRO cars, but I don't see it transferring over here as part of our mandate, unfunded mandate.
That was based on information from the association counties that we did in 2012.
Okay.
But we can add that one to it.
No, that's fine. I mean, I'm just saying that there's still even more that technically falls under that category of unfunded stuff.
Well, none of those numbers include anything like utilities for those different departments or, or vehicle, building insurance or janitorial. Those are not separated by those departments.
So $13,760,000.
Most all utilities are covered under the facilities management department. So we'd have to go back and break out each utility bill as to where it belonged to. The only one that is currently, the jail has its own set for utilities. And then the, a couple of the fire stations have them separated. Otherwise, it falls under facilities management.
Think that kind of, I mean, I don't think there's any need for any further detail on that. I think that just shows how much money actually goes away that we don't even really have anything to do with at all. So thank you for putting that together. Anybody else have any questions or comments on that part?
It's kind of eye-opening.
Absolutely.
That half of it's mandated.
All right. Anything else Debbie Karen on that?
Not for all, not for operating unless y'all have some questions.
All right. Any questions? Community services, line item five, finance staff.
Um, community services. Three agencies composed, comprise the community services budgeted. The disabilities and special needs, the library, Piedmont Tech. For FY 2021 budget required a levy of 6.9 meals to service a total budget of $1,3,584. For all these agencies, staff proposed budget for these agencies for FY 2122 does not include a tax increase, the same millage of 6.9. Dividing the growth in the levy, it will add $34,000 for that budget. And it will be divided appropriately between the three based on the amount they receive. We propose for the Newberry Disabilities, $38,592. The library, $519,362. And Piedmont Technical College, $480,206 for a total of $1,038,160.
Questions on the community service levy? Comments? Hearing none. Item number six, debt service levy, finance staff.
The chart, the narrative for your debt service levy is divided into a couple of different sections. Table one projects bonded indebtedness impacts on three categories. We have traditional bonds, we have lease purchase obligations, and we still have the speculative building indebtedness. Projection of the overall bonded indebtedness for fiscal year 2122 is summarized in section D below. As with the operating levy, setting the millage for bonded indebtedness is the responsibility of the county auditor. Moreover, she may in any given year have additional funds on hand that influence or reduce the amounts needed from current year property taxation to meet the county's bonded indebtedness obligations. The levy projections provided below are merely estimates that use the county's current year fiscal year 2021 obligations as a baseline, treating known increases from existing amortization schedules and planned expenditures in the proposed FY 2122 budgeted as cumulative additions to those baselines. Other considerations where applicable are specifically noted in the narratives to follow. In our traditional geo-bonded indebtedness, the 2020A and 2020 geo-bonds require a total levy of 1.9 meals and the 2018C geo-bond requires .6 meals. The public works installment purchase requires a levy of one meal. This is a total of 3.5 meals, which is a .9 meal increase over fiscal year 2021. For lease purchase indebtedness, the fiscal year 2122 budget includes funding for the following. One ambulance for EMS at $200,000. One brush mini pumper for $100,000. One flatbed truck for public works at $80,318. And a recorder for the 911 system at $100,000 totaling $480,318. Beyond FY 2021, excuse me, 2122, the table below assumes the addition of annual lease purchase in the amount of $1 million or more for each subsequent year. For 2122, it is a proposed net change in a decrease of 1/10 of one meal. However, the following items were requested from the 2122 budget that are not currently in the funding scheme above. The Board of Rural Fire Control asked for two tankers totaling $700,000. The Board of Rural Fire Control also asked for protective clothing at $72,000. The rescue squad asked for an ambulance at $200,000. Rescue squads asked for a hearse tool at $50,000. Communication radio upgrades are at $72,000. Public Works was in need of a backhoe at $239,510. Fire and rescue stations were requesting three new generators at $210,000. And the EMS service requested a QRV vehicle at $42,000. These requests that are not included total $1,585,510. Section C is our speculative building indebtedness. Santee Cooper has extended interest payment only for the first speculative building in the Commerce Park through FY 2324. Beginning FY 2425, the annual debt service will rise from $23,800 to $252,468 as principal payments begin. For FY 2122, there is a 1/10 increase in a meal, 1/10th meal increase estimated for this section. For all bonded indebtedness purposes, as a summary, there is a 9/10 of a meal increase based on the amortization schedules. Note that if the auditor may have funds on hand for this year, could possibly lower that number if she has funds that she feels that can be used.
So that's the debt service levy. Any questions or comments?
I have, I have one. I know we've been doing a lot in economic development and we're doing so much to try to invite industry to come into Newberry. But this first speculative building, that's the building right now that Schweitzer-Maudwe is in, is that correct? And that was part of the Samsung deal along with all the incentives and the fee in lieu of and so forth. I'm looking here and maybe I'm, I just need some understanding, but it says here that our cost will rise from $23,800 a year to $252,468 a year. And that's going to be in fiscal year 2324, is that correct?
Yes, sir. 2425.
2425.
So what we'll do at that point is we'll be paying 10 times what we have been paying in order to pay that off. How long will that, it says payment begins, principal payment begins. How long will that continue at that 10 times inflated rate?
August of 2028.
And at this point, do we have any additional expected revenues to cover that increase?
Not that we know of, no, sir.
The cost of economic development sometimes is hidden. You know, that's a.
Well, council voted on that and it was extended to interest-only payments. It was supposed to start sooner than that, but yes. I don't know that it was hidden, it was voted on.
I didn't mean it in a way that's hidden. Sometimes it's just not as obvious until it's time to pay for it.
Exactly.
How many bonds do we have that's coming off between now and 2028 Debbie? Do we know?
2028.
I'm, I'm just trying to think of, I mean, when you look at how many meals, where that gap can be closed because if we got those bonds that we're paying.
That's why I was asking if there was any, any kind of revenue coming in or lack of reducing some expense to cover that.
I think there's some just retiring each year up through that time. It should probably.
That's an additional quarter of a million a year.
They look like they all go off on 2028, March or August. And I do not have the current amortization for the 2021A and the 2021B. But I don't think we extended that. It's go, they go off in March of 2028.
So that should more than make up for the total numbers, I think.
Lease purchase would be the ones that would come off quicker than the bonds, the geo-bonds.
If you look in section D and you look at FY 2425, when that one comes on.
Right.
You see it's a total. You see it's a total net change of 1 mil increase. That is because those that are currently in existence, plus the amortization for new lease purchase, as forecasted right now at a million dollars, we should only have a 1 mil increase.
And that's provided we don't borrow anymore for any more?
Yes, sir.
And that's adding to the lease purchase each year?
That's adding to the lease purchase each year.
Except this year.
It should stay at this, but you have to always think about what is your mil value, and those type things may play a factor in that, as well as if the auditor has cash on hand.
It's $480,000, a little less than half a million in the budget for lease purchase for FY 2122.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we won't know what Donna has on hand until later on as the process goes.
But am I reading it correctly? This year for lease purchase, we're, I don't say we're only doing, but it's 480,000?
That's correct.
So if we're looking at a million dollars from next year on through for how many years?
Seven years.
Seven years. We may be able to come under that, considering we're only doing 458 this year, we may be able to come in a little less than the million, which would then balance it back out from the 1 mil increase. I mean, potentially, probably only have to save $100,000 and do 900,000 instead of a million, but I mean, it will be some numbers. That's, that's projected, am I correct?
We also figured a million dollars for the FY 2122 budget whenever we did the 21 budget. We had to come down a little bit off of that.
Okay, other questions in sight, otherwise? All right, that be the case, capital budgeting and fund balance?
Behind the tab for capital budgets. Capital projects in the FY 2122 budget will be funded by four sources. Three of the, three of these projects are funded by agency grants that totaled $2,908,500, bonded indebtedness of $605,465, and fund balance of $1,468,875. There are nine projects remaining from the capital project sales tax referendum, the CPST. Funding these projects is provided by the capital sales tax project. And a tax, a tax shows the revenue sources and expenditures for each project. Do y'all want to go over those, highlight them, or just read what they are? Airport layout plan, it gives you the revenues and expenditures for that. That is funded mainly by the FAA. The animal control, these will all change as we go through the process, because some of these will be complete, hopefully by the end of June 30th. We have a small amount left for animal control, and it was funded by bonded indebtedness. The Cannon Creek Court Crossing, there's still a little bit of engineering to do there. We've had to do some renovations for the courthouse elevator, the freight elevator. That is paid by bonded indebtedness and fund balance. And we've had to increase the fund balance because the bids come back a little higher than what we had anticipated. We still got some money left for the consolidated roof. The detention center, I think we're trying to finalize that to move, to close it out. The emergency services training ground, we have not yet paid for the burn building. That's about $100,000. The fleet services building went out for bid, and I don't know if councils had those to come before you, but they should be in the next weeks. Friendly Fire Department roof has not been completed, and the remaining, the majority of the remaining is the ones that council did on the budget amendment for the Mid-Carolina Commerce Park improvements. And majority of those are fund balanced, with the exception of the roadway, and some of that is CPST money. And we are getting money from the local SC grant funding for some, the power team for some, and the remaining are CPST projects. And it's time to do one of those again.
I was gonna ask that.
In the current budget, in the operating budget, we have $60,000 budgeted for engineering services that are provided, to be provided for the CPST projects, so that we have estimates on those before it actually gets to the councils, to the stage of council's approval for referendum.
So that's in this proposed budget for this year? And we don't have, we haven't selected the engineering firm to assist?
No, sir. We, that was just, we just wanted to get the funds in there now. That will still be a process to come.
When did we have to get that committee going?
It's like 18 months out, so we need to...
Start working on it.
Yeah. Be soon.
And that engineering firm is significantly important, because that first one that we ever did was a mess, and it...
I think we paid $72,000 for the last one, and it proved to be well worth it.
Your, your, your project costs are a whole lot more spot on with, with the firms being able to almost bid, I don't say bid them out, but I'll do a, do a very good estimate of what it is in, in hand before we ever put them on the ballot.
The current projects have to be complete soon before we can move forward.
And I guess I ask this question, I know we were on a pace that everything was coming in, but with COVID and all, is the capital project sales tax money, or do we have a way of knowing whether it's still coming in at a pace that's...
The treasurer should be able to tell us how it's going, but I can check and give that to you. I know Theo raised some buildings.
I just wonder, because I mean, that, that could have hampered spending, so...
The last time we checked, though, it was pretty much...
Online?
...a difference, but I checked with Theo.
Okay. Just a question, since we're on the CPST, the city of Newberry, of course, had the, the recreation complex, and it was funded by the CPST. Did they have a fixed amount, and we've already paid them that amount, and they're distributing that?
Yes, sir. They, after the first year after the funds were received, only maybe three months or less than six months, we funded them the entire portion of that, so that it was easier for them to keep up with that spending, instead of coming back and forth between us. And as a municipality, they were allowed to do that. So we funded it basically all at one time to the city.
So do they, do we have any others that have done the same thing, or is it just the city?
No, just the city. Most others do not have the capability of funding those type of things and asking for reimbursement.
So if, and we've had history of this before, not recently, but where we didn't have enough CPST funds to fund the project that was voted for and agreed to proceed with. If the city comes back to us and requests additional funds because they don't have enough funds to pay based on what we gave them on the current CPST, what is our reply?
It is my understanding from Theo DeBeau's that until all projects are completed, any funds that are overcollected cannot be issued out until all projects are completed. As far as when, when that happens and there are over collections, I'm not sure how that is determined as to who gets the funds.
I'm not concerned about an over collection as much as I'm concerned about an under collection. If their, if their estimation went beyond, that's where I was asking a question.
Jay?
Mr. Hip, it's my recollection, because this was the first time we worked out a relationship like this with a municipality. And it was my understanding that what, what we worked out with the city is we said, here's the amount that we believe will come in. And based on that amount, they adjusted their original proposal, because they had a larger proposal than what they currently have. But it's my recollection that the money they got is all they're gonna get. If they're short, that's up to them. That's their portion of it.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yes, that's my recollection of it.
And that would not hold up our projects, us for going?
We met our obligation...
Remaining projects.
Yeah, my understanding is we met our obligation with them when we gave them the lump sum at the beginning, and they had the, I guess, the executive privilege of utilizing that money, however, they, they can't, they're not supposed to be able to come back and ask for more.
They received, they received the amount that was on the ballot.
Right. And, and if you go through, I know with the presentation, there's a lot of things that, a lot of different ones, but just for the general public out there listening, like animal control is only $8,300 and something dollars left, Cannon's Creek, $8,021, Consolidated Five is $38,000.
Several of these projects have already been done. These are the funds that were not needed at that point, but at animal control, because it is bonded indebtedness, we have to have, okay, we've been talking with Theo DeBeau's on that, they have a gate that they would like to install. It was not originally on the scope of the work, and before it can be, it would have to come before council, for council to approve the change in the spending for that money. And it's the same way with the fire stations, and the Pomeria roof for theirs is rescue, or Prosperity's rescue. They have completed those roof repairs. These are funds that have not been spent as of today. Tommy is asking if we can see if they can be reallocated to the fire training grounds. Because it is budget, bonded indebtedness, it still has to come back through the council to approve whether those funds can be done in that way.
Okay. So just for a little clarification here, do we have an actual amount that you could provide us that says, this is what our anticipated revenues will be based on how much time we have left in collection versus where we are in expenditure of those funds, so that right now we know whether we're gonna have in excess of, you know, 30,000, 3,000, or whatever? Do we have any of that?
For CPST, we'll have to get that information. We'll have to get that estimate from Mr. DeBeau's. For the other projects, they are either bonded indebtedness, which we bonded funds in the current fiscal year for those capital projects.
I was just specifically talking about CPST.
For CPST, it is information we'll have to gather from Mr. DeBeau's, and we'll have to bring that back to you.
Thank you.
But there's a whole lot of them in here. When people go to hearing all these num, all these, like Towne and Silver Street, $46,000, Newberry Museum, $14,000, Detention Center, $31,000, Opera House, $5,800. I just say all that to say, when you're hearing it out there, there's another one here, Newberry South Industrial, $11,000. We're not talking 300, 400, 500,000, or a million dollars per each one of them. We're, we're really down into a workable number, so just to keep people from being overly alarmed, when you hear all those different subtopics, they're not, some of them don't have a whole lot left on them at all, so... And again, last I had heard, the capital project sales tax money had been coming in at a rate that was gonna meet the needs and probably have some excess, but that was before, well, I say before, COVID numbers probably were coming in.
We'll have to chisel in, into the treasury and see what they can, because that money actually goes to our treasurer.
Okay. That would be just very good information to have.
All right, any other questions on the capital budget or fund balance? All right, now we're on to number eight, questions and comments from council members?
Before you go on...
I'm sorry?
We need to give you the estimate on fund balance?
Sure.
It has its own tab for fund balance. You'll see what we, the impact for 2021 on fund balance would be adding a total, excuse me, let me say this right. If you look down at the bottom in number three for fund balance projection, for 630 2021, we anticipate unassigned fund balance to be $15,343,199. That gives us approximately 6.9 months in reserve. For FY 2122, ending 63022, that is assuming 100% expenditure and 100% collected revenues, we should have 6.09 months in reserve.
So a reduction of 8.2?
Yes. All of the items listed in number two are projects that are going to affect fund balance in the capital projects that are listed there. Anything that was for CPST or for bonded indebtedness is not included here.
What Seth has done is we kind of projected where we'd be at June 30th with revenues and expenses, and that's your part one, A and B, that's your revenue variances and your expenditures. That was based on March 15th or 20th numbers, so we, we'll adjust that as the, the process goes on. But the impact of the capital projects is the 2 million, is what, what we've already obligated to do. Another note on that, should the county have to pay as much as a million dollars in legal fees, that fund balance normally will be 5.6 months of operating.
Any other words?
Do we have anticipation of that?
Well, I think, I think Jay is in negotiations at this time or whatever.
Okay. I don't know that that's something we want to discuss.
No, not now, just...
No, I don't need the detail, I just asked, do we have anticipation of 100% expenditure of that? Or a million, million, rather.
All right, any other comments from administrative staff?
Not unless y'all got it.
Okay, questions or comments from the council members? Nick?
I don't have any, thank you.
Mr. Hip?
Not right now. We'll, we'll have some more information, I guess, at our work session. When's that next one, Debbie?
April the 26th. And it's regarding what information would you be wanting us to provide you other than the CPST numbers?
All right. Ms. Arrowwood?
I don't have any.
Um, Mr. Reader?
I don't have any comments either from the standpoint of the budget, just y'all thanks for your diligence in compiling all these numbers, and I know we all greatly appreciate that, and I think it's kind of, it's a lot to digest when you sit here and you go through all the numbers and all the possibilities, and, you know, again, that sheet that y'all gave us on unfunded mandates, it does just kind of burn you a little bit to know that that much is already in there before we can do anything about it, so... Anyway, with that being said, public comments. Newberry County Water and Sewer, do you want to speak at this time, any of y'all? If you please come to the podium.
That's soil and water.
Ma'am?
Soil and water conservation.
Soil and water.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Setzler. I'm chairman of Norbury Soil and Water Conservation District. We now have fellow commissioners Doug Height and Mark Kizer. I apologize, I came straight from the farm, so y'all will have to deal with the smell. Little tall for this thing. Very briefly, normally, most of you would have had a chance to hear about us at the legislative breakfast. We've worked with some of you in the past, but because of COVID, we didn't have a legislative breakfast, so very briefly, conservation districts are established from state law. There are 46 counties, 46 districts. Our goal is simple, conservation with common sense. We are nonpartisan, not really a volunteer board, but we are the only elected position in South Carolina that doesn't get paid, which I am proud of, and it keeps us honest. First, a couple very quick questions, probably from Ms. Cromer. Collections budget, 17,000, that's part of a proviso. The current plan is to... thousand, that's part of a proviso, the current plan is to move that to a, uh, like a trash pickup kinda budget?
Stacy Guy, our recycling coordinator, will, uh, distribute that as she, she sees fit.
She, yes. And the rest of our funding, is that currently?
It's currently out of the budget, based on us getting additional information, as such as the part-time, we were told it's part-time.
Who told you that?
Uh, we heard it.
It wasn't us, because we haven't been asked.
In a roundabout way, yes, sir, it was.
Please explain.
We heard rumors that you were, uh, making that a part-time person from within, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
And we cut it out, I'll back up a few minutes, we have not notified you of that because it has not gone before full council until tonight, you will get your letter tomorrow, or email tomorrow.
Okay.
But if it's wrong, we're here, you can tell us that now.
I plan to. I'll come back to that part, there's a few points I wanna make on the funding, uh, we take a lot of pride in carefully spending the funding we get, because we don't get a whole lot, and that's okay. So, what we do, do with it, most of what y'all give us, it goes to a county employee, we have one employee, traditionally has been part-time, um, as Ms. Cromer stated earlier, twenty-ish years ago, it was moved under county purview for the purpose of taking advantage of the state benefits. I was before my time, but seemed a little silly to try to run all that for one person, so the county was kind enough to take on that. We get funding from y'all, and then y'all send us a bill every quarter, uh, after y'all pay our employees, we end up paying it back. Uh, Newberry County is our largest source of funding by a long shot. With that funding, this year, we got a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar Feral Hog grant, I won't go into the specifics of the grant, but that's money that will mostly be spent here in Newberry County, seems like a pretty good investment. Ten thousand-ish each year for Keep Newberry County Beautiful grants, go directly to litter prevention. Last year, we completed a two-hundred-thousand grant, called a CLAP grant, that went to the Indian Creek area of Newberry County. On top of that, we do in-kind contributions that allow an additional thirty thousand from other sources outside of Newberry County to fund one employee, and then last year, an additional twenty-five thousand-ish for another employee, that was also from outside sources. What I'm telling you here is that all that together, in the last two years, is about just short of half a million dollars we've bought into the county, and to remind you, you give us about forty-seven thousand traditionally, I believe, isn't that it? And we brought in close to half a million. Other things we spend money on is our camp conservation we do every year, it's been a hit with the kids, and it helps to teach them, one of our big priorities, not to litter. Uh, we give out three to five thousand dollars in scholarships, we have installed gardens at our local schools, we've installed greenhouses, and we've installed outdoor classrooms, all free to the schools. Litter control is something that we do as part of Keep Newberry County Beautiful, we just came off of our most successful Great American cleanup we've had in years, thirty, thirty-five volunteers, forty-plus bags of trash, plus an additional four adopt-a-highway groups. Now, we've been going through some changes with our employment, I'm happy to answer any questions about that, basically, it was time to move on from the employee we had, we made that difficult decision, and we did, and now we are in the process of regrouping. Thankfully, Danielle Hemsey, who most of you have worked with some in the past in some capacity, has come back part-time to help us make that transition, uh, she's been working her heiny off to try to get everything organized, we've been trying to hire new employee, we have a meeting tomorrow night to go ahead and move forward with interview processes. Now, our programs, like everybody else, have been hurt by COVID in the last year, usually we like to get in the schools and the classrooms, that hasn't been an option, lots of things haven't been an option. In that time, while we were trying to figure out how we were gonna move to our next employee, we started outsourcing some of the things we do, this provided continuity, while, since we have one employee, if that one employee is gone, there's nobody in the office to do the work. So, we did that for some continuity, the option we have on the table now is an employee, well, the job we've been advertising, twenty-to-thirty-hour employee, with the option to go full-time if things go well, in other words, we're looking to get back to where we have been for the last twenty, thirty years, or whatever, probably longer than that. I make that point to say that even though we say we are right now going to a part-time employee, we are not shrinking, in fact, we are expanding, even if we go back to a full-time employee, we will still probably keep some of the outsourced things that we've been done, been doing, so that we can accomplish more. Now, the way I understand it now, the county will be giving us zero dollars, if that is the case, Newberry will be the only county in South Carolina that gives their conservation district zero dollars, a distinction I'm pretty sure y'all don't want. It would also kill the fifteen-thousand-dollar contribution that DNR makes directly to conservation districts every year, if the county does not meet a three-hundred-dollar minimum, that money is gone. There's only one county in South Carolina that uses that three-hundred-dollar minimum, only one. Beyond that, there's four counties that donate between five hundred and one thousand to their local districts. Other than those five counties, all forty-one other counties donate more than a thousand dollars, the top is about five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, I think, it's Greenville County, don't worry, I'm not gonna ask y'all for five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, but it's at least a comparison. Further, many of the grants we do rely on in-kind contributions, for us, a lot of that, besides the equipment we already own and everything, comes from our employee hours. If we don't have any funding, we don't have an employee, we have some money built up, we'll last a while with an employee, but it will run out, when it does, the in-kind contributions will be gone, the Feral Hog grant will be gone, and any other grants and funding we bring into the county will be gone, there is no way around it, it's a matter of when, not if. I think that's the main points I wanted to make, and I don't feel like standing up here all night, and I know y'all don't wanna hear me talk all night, so, I am happy to answer any questions from staff or council at this point.
Mr. Hip?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Setzler, could, it sounds like this statistical information's available to us, could you find out from whatever your state source is, what on a percent of budget donation each county provides?
I can give you a list of donations from each county?
And I don't want an absolute amount, because an absolute amount from Greenville County means nothing to Newberry County, what I need is a percent of county budget that's allocated to the Soil and Water District in each one of those counties.
Okay.
And if the percent of the budget's impossible, just, I mean, don't say just, but give us what they're giving.
I have, I already have a list on my phone right now of what each county gets, I admit it is gonna be kinda tough to figure out every county's budget, in fact, y'all would probably have better luck finding the overall budget of every county than I would, but I can certainly try.
Well, and it, uh, you know, the, for county budget, the SEAC provides information from all the counties, so maybe we can, uh, can assist, if you can get the absolute numbers, maybe we can assist in that comparison, but I would like to see what other counties are doing in relative terms.
Is some, some of the, um, Association of Counties, it gives the budget?
Okay, yeah.
By counties?
Yeah. So, we can, um, I don't, if, is that something that y'all have easily access to, or do you wanna go to the Association of Counties website, that info, I'm not sure?
It's, anybody can pull it up?
Okay, South Carolina Association of Counties, we'll have our county budgets, and it doesn't have to be for this year, because we're just now proposing our budget for this year, use the, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget as a reference, and let's see, since you, you know, you make a good point about other counties supporting Soil and Water in the counties, let's, let's see a comparison.
Newberry's been kind to us in the past, I appreciate the donations we've had, and I like to think we've used them carefully and efficiently, uh, I would argue more efficiently than most, and it is kinda hard to hear, when I hear that we're about to spend three-hundred thousand on tobacco, and a million here and all this, that forty-seven thousand dollars is one of only, it sounds like two things getting completely cut from the budget, that's a tough pill to swallow. I hope that'll be reconsidered, now, one of the things that was mentioned is that there's additional understanding needed, can I help with that in any way?
The part-time to the full-time, and you addressed that?
Okay, and I believe the comment was made, something about that it wouldn't, uh, qualify for state benefits.
If, they have to work thirty hours to be considered for health insurance.
I understand that, and we can do that, my question is, why would that justify cutting of all the funds?
It was a lean year for us, and we were, y'all were not, they were having questions about the litter, and I understand through outside sources that not a whole lot has been done for the litter for the seventeen thousand, so we just decided to move it where our recycling coordinator would have control over that seventeen thousand.
Okay, I'd respectfully ask y'all to revisit that decision. Now, that was the seventeen, but the, uh, that doesn't cover the thirty-one thousand we've been getting for, or thirty-two thousand, I think, we've been getting for.
For the full-time person.
Right. And what was the justification for cutting that funding?
We come in on the tail end of all of this, we, uh, needed just more justification on our end.
For the?
For the full-time, because we also do payroll here, and we knew that position was gone.
Well, it's not gone.
That's what you're telling us, yes, sir?
I told you the position's gone?
No, you told us the position was gonna be part-time and made full-time later.
I think that's splitting hairs pretty carefully, um.
Um, let's see.
It is the same position that has been cut back approximately ten to twenty hours, depending, it's still district coordinator position.
It's, was full-time cut to twenty to thirty hours?
Currently.
It's my understanding too, and this is just things that we've been told, our people, our county employees work forty hours.
Uh-huh.
How many hours do yours work?
In the past, or the future employee that we don't have yet?
Both, both?
In the past, forty, unfortunately, forty-plus sometimes, but forty is the, uh, the state of the job, I guess.
Because at one time, this is years ago, I've been here forever, that person didn't work on Friday afternoons, or didn't work on Wednesday afternoons, and didn't work thirty-seven and a half hours.
Uh, I would need to see some evidence of that, I don't think that's ever happened, uh, we have let the employee off Friday afternoons occasionally, uh, but that's not a normal thing.
I'm looking for my letter, because I have a letter with a list of.
That'd be fine, um, yeah, you know, sometimes the employee may get off a little early on Friday, or maybe some other day, if they have something going on, they need a little flexibility, but just like y'all are, they're expected to come to monthly meetings, they're expected to go to conferences, uh, I feel confident that our employee has put in forty hours plus.
Just from my understanding, the outside sourcing that you've done, what, what do you mean by outside sourcing?
Outside sourcing for grant funds?
Um, you said that outside sources, you were employing other outside sources, but your employee would work twenty to thirty hours, and an option to go full-time, what other outside sourcing were you talking about?
Oh, outsourcing parts of it.
Yeah.
We've been working with an accounting firm a little bit, uh, to take over some of our QuickBooks entry-type stuff, um, a marketing firm to help, of course, get our name out a little more, so to speak, uh, we want to hire an education coordinator once schools open back up, we had planned to already do that, but wasn't any point with schools not being open, uh, figured we'd save that money till we could use it more, so there was one more thing.
What would the marketing person be doing, just, just for?
The blunt, and I'm not trying to be a, a meanie here, but marketing, to, to, I mean, so.
Just to get you out, bill, billboards or something like that?
We have, well, mostly digital-type stuff, so when we have events and stuff, say our camp conservation, or a litter pickup, or something like that.
Gotcha, okay.
If we, uh, put a post on, say, our Facebook page or something like that.
Gotcha.
Make it a few people to come, but if we can get a marketing firm to get our name out a little more, we hope to increase, and have increased participation in these events. Well, grants is one thing, scholarship applications, like I said, I would credit our marketing for the big uptick we had, and volunteers showing up for the Keep America, the Great American Cleanup we just had, March thirty-first, I believe it was. I'm here to answer, ask away.
I got your cell number.
Yes, you do.
All right, I guess I'll just say, if y'all have questions, y'all work.
Yeah, please do, any of y'all, I think a lot of you probably have my cell number.
Um, appreciate your, your, um, time being, um.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right, now, we had Doug in here too, uh, Mark, you're here, but I guess he spoke, okay, all right, Jack Shields left, Gordon Johnson, you. Okay, and then Ben Chapman with the Sheriff's Department?
All good.
All good, all right, so that hits all the public comments, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mary, all right, we are adjourned, thank you, and thank you all for coming out tonight.